Good morning, welcome to this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners. Today is December 31st, it's nine o'clock in the morning. Please rise for the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to item three. Any citizens desiring to be heard?
Well, I'm interested in this proposed shooting range that's going in just outside Meridian City Limits.
Would you give your name to the clerk?
My name's John N. Kolinsky. I'm a citizen of Meridian.
Okay, thanks for coming, John. If you'd like to make a statement, please do.
Well, I'm interested in finding out.
The board can't interact with you on this topic. I'd be happy to talk to you after the meetings.
All right.
But you're welcome to make a statement.
I don't have a statement because I don't have any information on this other than the fact that it's a proposed deal.
All right then.
There's nothing, nothing in our town, nothing anywhere's in fact, you know, your board meeting here, I mean, basically it doesn't mention a gun range at all. Like it's hush-hush, but I'm here to find out what's going on.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Moving on, any other citizens desiring to be heard? All right, hearing that, consideration of possible action to approve minutes of December 13th, 2019.
I'll move we approve.
I'll second. Since that mic wasn't here.
Yeah, I wasn't here, but I listened to it. Why should?
All right, have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, I guess I'll abstain because I wasn't here even though I did.
Okay, so you will abstain.
So you approved the minutes, but.
So you're gonna abstain or?
I guess you will. I think I'll abstain on that.
Okay.
All right.
Item five, open seal bid number 2020-15 for six month road base repairs and consideration of possible action to award.
We received one bid from Atlas.
Probably not a surprise.
We mailed out seven bids.
Not too many there stood in that fashion.
All right.
That'd be Atlas solid as soon.
Yes, that was the only one we received, the bid.
Gotcha.
Well, can tell that one's, that was it.
You like it?
Not so much. But it's the only one we got.
That's true.
I move we approve the six month.
I will suck it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item six, consideration of possible action to award the following bids tabled from December 13th, 2019.
Well, on Rock Hall, I'm gonna go with Brown Transportation.
Okay, can I ask a favor so we're not?
Sure.
Please, so I can make sure I get this right. So on 2020-10, which is Rock picked up and then Rock called, District One for pickup.
For pickup? That would be Quapaw drum ride for the crusher run. And we're gonna, we're gonna go to Pawnee for rip rap if we need it.
But it's all Quapaw?
Yes.
Okay. District Two for pickup?
Aye for pickup, we're gonna stick with Stewart.
District Three as well.
For Stewart.
And for?
Wait.
Go ahead. I'll wait.
Okay, so now for haul in delivery on District One?
Uh, oh, go ahead.
What, you're changing your pickup?
No.
Okay.
For hauling, that would be Brown Transportation.
District Two?
As well.
As well.
Okay. Okay, do you wanna make motions separately or do all three bids in one motion or how do you wanna do that?
I'm good with whatever feeds the bulldog.
I just wanna get it down and make the motions that we accept both.
Okay, so have Mike making a motion?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bid 2020-10 be awarded as was detailed. Okay, 2020-11 is for asphalt, picked up and delivered and crushed asphalt. So District One.
My sheets are not in the same order as what you're talking about. Okay, asphalt, that's, that's delivered. So which one we looking at? Laid in place or delivered?
We're looking at number 12, bid number 12 for asphalt.
12, all right, delivered.
Yeah. So you've got pickup and delivery on both on that bid?
So yeah, I've got Atlas for asphalt and with one exception, that's TJ Campbell has the best price on hot mix type C recycled. So I don't know how to split that out, but that's kind of, I've got it highlighted here.
That was hot mix type?
Hot mix type C recycled.
Okay.
All right, they've got the least expensive price there. And of course, this is all based on availability, right? So if they don't have it, then.
Then we can move to the next best bid.
Right. So I guess to simplify things, just put me down for Atlas and we'll, we'll work with that.
Okay, is that for pickup and delivery?
Uh, that's delivered, pickup, hang on a second. Yes, and then there's one except, again, there's an anomaly here with Haskell lemons and Atlas in one area and that's in the zone 301 to 500 tons. Haskell lemon has a better price for type A in zone, in all of my zones actually than Atlas. Other than that, Atlas for everything else.
So picking and choosing?
I think that's what the board's supposed to do. I think that's what we're all doing.
Split that up.
If we weren't, we would vote as a board to pick one vendor for everybody.
Got it.
Again, based on availability because Haskell lemons breaks down a lot.
All right. That was some time sitting up here.
So if I can clarify?
Yes ma'am.
It looks like on the recycled across the board, type A, B, and C, Atlas is cheaper than Haskell lemon. On, on all three for recycled, so you could split this out to just take recycled across the board to Atlas?
No, actually 301 to 500 tons Haskell lemon's cheaper on type B and type C than Atlas in every instance on my, in my area anyway.
Okay, I'm not sure we're looking at the same bid.
On laid in place?
We're not on laid in place.
Okay.
I'm at delivered too.
We're talking the, the regular asphalt, not laid in place.
Yeah, picked up.
Picked up and delivered, right. So on the recycled three types?
Let me get back to where I'm supposed to be. Okay, so I thought we'd moved on to something else. TJ Campbell, yeah, it's, just put me down for Atlas on delivered to my district, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, delivered and then do you have a pickup?
Uh, Atlas with one exception.
Okay.
Again, that's hot mix type C for Haskell lemons.
For pickup?
Right.
Okay.
Recycled hot mix type C.
Recycled, okay. All right, District Two for pickup?
Uh, for pickup, TJ Campbell. Or no review, would, uh, Atlas.
District Three?
I'll go with TJ Campbell on pickup and Haskell lemon laid in place and delivered. They're not gonna, okay, delivered, delivered. You're trying to sneak ahead.
Yeah, he's, it was a test.
It's taking too long.
Okay, so based on that, does someone wanna make a motion on awarding bid 11?
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now at bid 2020-13 asphalt laid in place. District One?
Make sure I get it there. All right. Atlas in all areas except in the 301 to 500 ton type B and type C. Because Haskell's a little bit cheaper than those. That is on recycled on virgin asphalt, the same Atlas with the exception in 301 to 500 ton category type A, that would be Haskell lemon.
Okay, District Two?
Laid in place?
Yes.
Atlas.
Across the board?
I think so.
District Three?
Haskell lemon.
Across the board?
Yes ma'am.
Hey, someone wanna make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Are we?
We're gonna move to item seven.
Thank you ma'am. Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve FEMA dash 4438 dash FR dash OK State Local Agreement for Disaster Assistance Due to Severe Storm Occurring May 7th to, or 2019 through June 9th, 2019, tabled from December 13th, 2019. Cause I did table this, I will, I've had time to look at it and I move we approve.
I'll second your motion.
Action. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So we only need one signature on this?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item eight, consideration of possible action to approve notice of grant agreement award with USDA and RCS for the following emergency watershed projects.
Oh.
Move that we approve.
Second.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
This, this is also set just for the chairman to sign where this arrow is on these two copies, please.
Go ahead and read the three projects, Otter and CR 65 Bridge Budman, Douglas and CR 69 Bridge Budman, CR 69 Broadway Bridge Budman. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve agreement with Oklahoma State University on behalf of Cooperative Extension Services for FY 2020.
Now that we have a formal approved budget, we can enter the formal agreement with OSU for extension services because we never know for sure the money until the budget's finished. We can't do the contract till we have confirmed the, the financial part, so.
I'll move we approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item 10, consideration of possible action to approve memorandum of understanding between OSU Cooperative Extension on behalf of Logan County 4A Shooting Sports for Logan County and Logan County for use of county-owned property located east half of the southwest quarter, section 19 dash 16 north, one east for Shooting Sports Range. Gentlemen, this is, the agreement to do this between the boards already been approved. This is approved under the specific contract authorizing it until the end of June.
It hasn't been approved with rest.
Well, the board, the board approved allowing the group to do this. I mean, we can go back and look at the, the minutes, but it was, it was proposed and passed to, to allow that to happen. And this is the contract that specifies what we're gonna do, or what we have agreed to do, which has been through Lowell. And it's been approved by the folks at Oklahoma State and that's just waiting on our approval. So I'll offer it to the board for their consideration.
Well, we have a lot of people, the people in that general area didn't want any extra shooting and wondered about the, where everything's gonna go and very sundry specifics, but this contract has to be renewed on an annual basis. And of course, if we decide to sell the property or something of that nature, we still are able to do that. And so personally, I think another location would be better. I don't know how we'd go about doing that, but there's a lot more secluded sites than that is what I'm saying, but we don't own those sites. There'd have to be a deal made, so it's whatever you guys decide.
What, do you remember when we approved this originally?
It was earlier this summer. And I think it was, I would have to pull my minutes to be sure, but I, I think we approved moving forward and, and seeing if it could happen.
Right.
I don't remember the exact.
We approved moving forward to see if it legally could happen and it can.
And it can.
And so, well, what I propose is that we approve this through June and we reevaluate whether we wanna sell the property. I know there's some interest in doing that. There's also some interest in joint usage with District Two, wanted to use it for pre-staging at the time.
That's correct.
So, I mean, either we wanna sell it or we don't wanna sell it. If we don't wanna sell it, then I don't understand why we would have an issue with limited use with a shotgun skeet range.
So shotgun, I wonder?
Uh, right now, yes, it would be. We can use, we have small board, but we have a few kids in that and they practice at a, the coach's property right now and that's more convenient. So unless that changes, right now, all I see is, is a shotgun, a trap or skeet.
What property do you have your site on now? You have it over on Academy or?
Uh, we do not, no, that, that was the municipal shooting range.
So where are you shooting now?
It's private property.
Private property.
It's probably not something that they wanna talk about in the open meeting.
Interesting, okay. You know, I, I just don't know that I wanna sign another contract with OSU and 4H. I mean, this, I know this is different besides the 4H Foundation and OSU that we done earlier on that building and the fair grants, I won't even know. I mean, is this gonna be another deal like that or?
I, the, we don't have to renew it come June if you wanna say no. If it becomes a problem, that's kinda how that works.
I personally think we need to sell the property myself, so I'm not blow it, not to.
Okay.
But I certainly don't mind them using it until we sell it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, we approve?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mike?
I'm thinking about abstaining at this time.
Are you thinking about it and you're gonna abstain?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes two to one.
If you're abstaining, you wouldn't sign it.
I'm not gonna sign that, yeah, so that'd be up to you.
All right, moving on to item 11, consideration of possible action to approve ODOT Federal Emergency Relief Damage Statement, Brandon, Meridian, south of Tripleton Road, report number 0812-42-02 in the amount of $25,290.50.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item 12, consideration of possible action to approve resolution calling for election of Free Fair Board of Directors to be held February 7th, 2019.
It should be 2020.
With the, with the board's concurrence will?
Because I typo'd, the resolution does say 2020.
With the board's concurrence will modify the agenda item to read February 7th, 2020. Any objection to that?
I have none.
All right, thank you. We will do that.
Troy, the only thing I got is what, what law is it says I have to have that election at my shop? Is there a law that says I have to have it there?
I don't think the law says it has to be at your shop, it has to be at a location in your district.
Can I have two locations?
No, that we used to do and then we found out we could not do that anymore.
We had them all come here and did.
Yeah, one, at one time we had done here and then you've split them between Moho and Crescent, but, but no, it's one location in your district.
I mean, that, that just ain't hardly fair. If I haven't Crescent, the Moho people won't drive to Crescent. If I haven't get through, the Crescent people were Moho people, won't drive. I mean, I don't know why it hurts to have two locations, that's retarded.
Well, that whole setup system.
That is, that is an interesting thing. I mean, because we have several different polling places in our, each of our districts and it would seem to me that we should be able to do that within a polling.
To be honest, the Clerk's Association for years has tried to get this moved over to the election board and held with regular elections. We actually accomplished that several years ago and before we could get the first election done, they went in and redid it and pulled it back and sent it back down here to operate this way.
So when do we have to decide where the polling place will be? Is that on this?
That's on that resolution, so if you wanna change it, you need to.
Just do it. I'd like to change to have it right here at this office.
Is this in your district?
Everything's in my district. I like the way you think. I've got, I've got some roads that I need to work on. This is my district.
Already said it.
Yeah. This is his history.
Okay, so you want it here?
Yeah. See you go. Personally, can we not ask Lowell about having it in multiple places?
I think we did, that's what, where we found out we could only have it in one because we were doing two.
We shouldn't have asked.
Well, if you have it here in Gorge, you don't have Crescent and Moho getting on your way.
Poor guy.
Listen, we would very much like to send this back to the election board where it should be.
Last time we had it election at my shop, it's, I think maybe two people from Moho. One of the candidates didn't even drive it there. It just ain't right.
I agree.
Okay, so we're gonna change District Three to be at 312 East Terracine from 7:30 to 3:00 PM, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, with the modification as stated, I move we approve. Item 12.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can you put that on the website where you know, notification that this has been changed?
Yeah, and it's, it's set to publish three different times in both papers.
Okay. No more discussion for me.
All right, thank you sir. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously as modified. Item 13, consideration of possible action to approve resolution designating 2020 county holidays. This resolution to supersede resolution 19-087 approved on November 15th, 2019.
So as I emailed out, County Clerk's Office lost their mind, wasn't just me, several of us that looked at this and we had neglected Veterans Day of November 11th on the previous resolution, so this is to correct that.
I'll make a motion and a second.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the holiday schedule? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 14, consideration of possible action on consent agenda.
Hey, Rome and Mike, on yours, you need to sign your travel claim. It's flagged here.
Yes.
We do. It's digital, but we do.
We might still kill the trees and send this update. We're not still killing trees and sending this update? Nichols is here. Huh? Can't hear her, I knew you was going to say that. My poor little granddaughter, she got herself a case of the flea right for Christmas and was sick through Christmas. Just got over it. That happened two, two years ago, too. She was sick through Christmas.
Her grandkids were sick during Christmas. The twins were really sick.
Just wanted to benefit some public school students.
They're not even in school yet.
It all gets dragged on.
Let me get comments and announcements by the board reminding me what happened to the fairgrounds.
Yes, sir.
Don't forget that when we get there.
I have any transfers today. These are blankets.
I don't know about this one. Kind of shady character.
You know what I mean? I looked at it all ago.
I guess somebody signed for it, I think.
I did. Yeah, I think you did.
A pre-signature signature. When Cheryl and I first got married, I tried to sign a check one time, because I didn't sign checks very often. The bank rejected it. Had to get my wife some signature forms. Bank rejected my check.
Election board, which goes down to an alcoholic beverage tax.
Aye. Be higher next one.
You know, alcohol tax.
Huh?
Don't you know, Phil, it's on you?
I thought it was for him, near mine.
You're not going to take a picture of it?
Uh, I want somebody to picture on it first.
Oh, there you go.
I didn't say. Always cover it up anyway.
I know.
Send you a trip from Intermodal.
Get a copy for us on it, that's for sure.
Oh, cut it off.
Sure it did. Good month. Eight Meridians was fifty-three dollars.
Yeah, it's usually forty, thirty, forty cents.
Yep, it's over ten thousand.
That doesn't count, New Year's Eve coming up. See, that, that'll be a big bunch. Come next time, right?
Go, Jim.
Down there. I, I forgot to flag it, so down where you're at.
So it's employment?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second that. In just a second, I'll be right with you, fellas.
Okay, a motion and a second on consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item fifteen, consideration of possible action on approving claims for payment for December twenty nineteen.
I will make the motion to approve the payments. A second when we can get through them.
I will, uh, call for a vote once I get to look at them. There was two of them here for the extension. Think y'all might have missed the bottom lot. Put together. I'll second Mike's motion. Have a motion and a second on approving the claims for payment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Chairman, we have nothing on sixteen.
Okay, nothing for Pecker. Item seventeen, once again, any citizens wanting to be heard? Hearing none, moving on to item eighteen, comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners. Mike?
Well, we got a nice little letter from Ed Cock on REAP, and we have been awarded fifty-five thousand dollars to pave the Meridian Road from one oh five south to industrial. So that contract will be probably in August or so, I think, and then we'll have a year, two, a year and a half before we're going to be able to complete the job. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Lonnie, do you want to talk about?
Yeah, the, the fairgrounds down here, uh, I've had several calls from the fair board members, and someone's wanting to have a fundraiser down there, and they want some sort of alcohol, and they think it's up to us. It's my understanding, we do not run the fairgrounds. It's totally up to the fair board. Is that correct?
That's my understanding as well.
I mean, why wouldn't we have a fair board if, if we're going to make the calls down there?
Are we sure they're not tough? And you know, here recently, someone else wanted to do some alcohol on the outside, and we needed to have the chairman or somebody sign off for that, that special event that was out at the Haunts earlier this year. So it may not be so much
Where's the Haunts?
Out east.
Off the river.
No, 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 but, but we still had to sign off something. What I'm saying is it may be more of a formality due to the liquor usage, not, not the board.
Well, I had a couple of the board members call me and say, I guess whoever this is, if they deny them right to have alcohol down there, they're going to come to the board, the D A, to get approval. I don't think we can approve it. I mean, we, we do not operate and run the fairgrounds.
Correct.
We fund it, but we don't operate it.
Correct. That's why we have a board.
It's the way I take it.
To make those decisions.
I mean, I think that they've always had a no alcohol policy in the buildings. I think they've done the, but that would be on the city side at the arena.
So I just trying to get some guidance on that, what to tell them, because I, I view it, we don't run the fairgrounds, they do.
I back you up on that.
I mean, just discussions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. Mike, I, I think that if there's an issue if there's a specific issue that the fair board wants us to address, they should send us something.
Be the fair board, though, not just...
That's what I said, it's the fair board. Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
So, but Mike was talking about REAP grants. The REAP grant I got last year, which had been sealed out here by Calvin Mays, and the contractor got bad old, so the chip and seal is coming up.
Dude.
So we actually wrote a letter to inform them, and so they ought to be redoing that here before long.
Did you get response to that, though?
I didn't know.
I have no, I have no.
So that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Lonnie. Um, I've got, uh, one item here for the board. I, I got a, uh, a J P, uh, engineering design for, um, Highway seventy-four, starting approximately five eighths of a mile south of Waterloo Road, extending up into, uh, approximately five hundred, or five eighths of a mile short of Triplet Road, which is almost seven miles
Aye.
of resurfacing. There'll be a two-inch resurface. They didn't give me a start date on this. Uh, the, uh, engineering documents were just updated, uh, in July of last year, of this year, excuse me. It's not last year until next week. Um, so I, I will call them with the J P number and, and get the, uh, approximate start time or, or date when they're going to let the, the contract. But it does look like that, that badly worn piece of Highway seventy-four, or a real, it's all badly worn.
Right.
Uh, but looks like they're going to put a two-inch overlay on that with an inch and a half aprons, uh, overlaid to the aprons, so.
And that was seventy-four. Could you give me the between streets again? I didn't catch.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, it is, uh, approximately, approximately, uh, five eighths, it starts approximately five eighths of a mile south of Triplet Road, extending south past Waterloo Road, approximately another five eighths of a mile into Oakland County, to where the asphalt transitions right through there. They're also going to do some bridge work on, uh, the Cottonwood Creek Bridge, uh, guardrails and such.
You might want to get them to spread that out there on the sewer in seventy-four, see if they can't get that going off to the west or whatever.
So that's all, that's all I have.
In the specs.
That's all I have for the board at this time. So with that, we'll move on to item nineteen, consideration of possible action for adjournment.
I'll make the motion, we adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.